I'm Clark.
Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting, Tuesday, July 19, 2016. The time is now 8:13. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 24, 2015, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted in the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor, except for Commissioner Rogers. He's absent, excused.
Minutes.
Minutes. We have June 21, 2016, minutes, and July 5, 2016, minutes. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for June 8, 2016, for June 21, 2016, and for July 5, 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes. We have communications. The Nutley Thriving Survivors has submitted an event application for their annual walk to be held on Friday, October 7, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Need a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the month of June 2016.
I have monthly progress reports for the Public Works Department for various months. Bills.
Bills for Tuesday, July 19, 2016. Public Affairs, $112,073.76. Revenue and Finance, $3,437,232.49. Public Safety, $42,877.60. Public Works, $44,964.14. Parks and Public Property, $494,020.54. For total payroll, $825,748.56. For a grand total of $4,956,917.09.
Who are the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Right. Mayor, excuse me one second. Before we get started, can I just ask a request from the Board of Commissioners? I just want to wonder if we could have a moment of silence for the police officers who lost their life in Dallas and then Louisiana? And also, I'd just like to commend the Nutley Police Department. We had a few officers that represented the state of New Jersey along with our own township and flew there on their own time and went to the wakes and the funerals. And I have to say, they really moved the people in Dallas of our going out there. So I'd just like to commend our police officers, and I feel terrible for the lives that were lost, and our prayers are with those families. If we could have a moment of silence, Mayor, I would appreciate it.
You all take a moment of silence for the fallen police officers.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment. Madam Clark, will you read the notice?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody who would like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Being done. Board of Commissioners, any announcements?
I have two. This Thursday at 7:00 at the Mud Hole, we have the Jersey Four performing our first summer concert of the season. And on August 3, we are going to have a night of Pokemon Go in the Mud Hole from 7 to 9, and we will have refreshments. Because if you go by on any given night, if you go by now, you'll see crowds of people walking around with their telephones trying to catch those little Pokemons. But we're going to turn it into an event, and we're going to enjoy it. Thank you, Mayor.
Other announcements?
Yes, Mayor. First off, we've -- I know there's been some disruption for certain residents. We have not issued the third quarter tax bills yet. They will be going out on Friday. We were delayed in issuing them because we were hoping to have the certifications from the state in plenty of time to issue the regular bill. Fortunately, that's not possible, so instead of sending out the normal bill for August, we'll only be sending out an estimated bill for the third quarter. And once the state resolves their negotiations, we'll send out the final bill for the year. So those bills will be going out on this coming Friday. The normal due date for paying the August bill is 10 days, so August 10. That's been extended to August 22.
Okay. Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
The first ordinance for this evening, 3342, has been tabled for further review and will reintroduce it at a later date. The remaining three introductions relate to our capital ordinance, which I'll consolidate with the permission of legal counsel. So ordinance number 3343, 3344, and 3345. The ordinance is providing for improvements of the water supply and distribution system in the amount of $178,000. The various improvements to our buildings and the amount of -- and other areas, such as computers and such vehicles, related equipment, for $982,500. And also for our roadways and sidewalks, appropriation for $460,000. The -- I therefore move and authorize the issuance of these bonds for each of these three notes, for the Township of Nutley and the part of the cost thereof. And I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with a notice required by law that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 16, 2016. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before we get to the ordinance on public hearing, got some good news over the past week. At Hoffman-Larosh and Prism had signed their pre-sale agreement, and the lease was signed by both Hackensack and Seton Hall for the new medical school. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners, all of them, for all their hard work, our professionals, Mr. Jenna Tempo, Mr. Inglisino, and banker, Mr. Pearlman. But I would like to open this up to the Commissioners to comment. I know all of us did a lot of hard work. Some of us spent their summers over at Hoffman-Larosh, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Petrakko. So open up. Commissioner Evans, you want to start?
Just, I'm very excited about the opportunity that this now provides our town. Certainly the opportunity to rebrand our community, to have a medical and research function for the first time in New Jersey, an integrated private hospital system for doctors, for nurses, for technicians. I think that's all precedent-setting, and I'm very excited about it. I think I'm excited about it for what it could do for our property values, what it could do for job opportunities for our people. And while this only represents a small piece of the site, it does set the stage for greater opportunities that we'll be learning more about over the coming months. So very much, very supportive of it, very excited about it.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Well, obviously, this has been a long road traveled. I mean, we started, what, almost three years ago with the Joint Repurposing Committee, bringing us all the way up to today, where I believe it was last week, the agreements were signed between Seton, Hackensack, and Prism, and the agreement of Prism and Hoffman-Larosh. And while Commissioner Petrakko and I attended a lot of those meetings in the early stages, that's not to discount any of the work that any of the other Commissioners did and what Commissioner Evans is doing now, what Commissioner Scarp -- Mayor Scarpelli has done and continues to do, and even Commissioner Rogers, who's probably on TV right now at the convention. But it was a team effort. I think it's one of the most wonderful things that could have happened to this town. It's obviously one of the most important things that we have done as a board, and I'm into my 17th year. Tom, I know you're not -- well, I'm 14, not far behind, and we have these youngsters here who are still coming along. But this is a great day. It's a great time to be here in Nutley. It's a great time to be part of this governing body, and I'm just proud of all of our elected officials, our attorneys, Mr. Jenna Tempo, Mr. Inglisino. And I'm not going to be redundant and mention all the professionals, but everyone did an outstanding job. And I think, as I said in the back, what you're going to see in the future is that this pilot agreement and this agreement in general will become the model for all future development. And I'm just proud and very pleased that I was able to be part of it. So thank you all.
Mr. Petrakko?
I guess I'll say the same thing I've been saying for the last four years. When I first became the mayor and Roche called me, I really thought they were kidding around that they were leaving. But I have to tell you not to be redundant. I, you know, there's always bumps in the roads, and we do have our differences at times, all of us. But I would not want to have spent the last four years of my life doing that without all these gentlemen, because everybody had a role in it. And it's an unbelievable site. I think it's going to do a lot for our town financially, morale-wise. I really think it's going to raise the house values. I have to say, I think I started this with Kevin Harkins way back when, and I'd just like to give a little shout-out to his family, because Kevin was really a rock at that time, because we were all stumbling, you know, when Roche announced that we left. But I have to thank John Inglisimo. And I have to say one thing about Alan Jenna Tempo. You know, Alan, when we first started that mission, I don't know how you made the time, and there was enough hours in the day, because it was really a 24/7 thing for Alan. And I have to say, Alan, you know, you were a true professional through it. And again, I wouldn't have wanted to spend those trying years with anyone else but the five Commissioners that we had at the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This is, I guess it was a little over four years ago that Roche announced they were going to leave. And to get to this point is truly amazing in itself, because there are other sites around the state that have been shuttered for a long time. So to get to this point where we have an agreement signed, we're looking to close -- they're looking to close on this property at the end of September. So we have a lot of work to do between now and the end of September to get to that final closed deal, which I think will be a boost to our local economy, will be a boost to employment in the area. And I just think that this is a great branding for the site, and we hope that'll attract other redevelopment and repurposing for the total site. So I want to thank everybody again for all their hard work in getting us to this point. And at this point, I'm going to open up ordinance number 3341. Ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, adopting the Hoffman-Larosh redevelopment plan for Phase 1. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3341?
Good evening. Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. The first thing I'd like to say is that I had made several requests to have the redevelopment plan posted on the Township website, and I did not locate it. So this might be a little lengthy, because I want to read the points from the plan, as the plan was not made available to the citizens of Nutley on the Township website. The original draft was prepared by Phillips Price Greigle LLC, planning and real estate consultants. September 2015 reviewed and revised by Mazer Consulting, October 16, 2015. The redevelopment plan Phase 1 specifically addresses a 10.9 acre portion of the redevelopment area referred to as Phase 1 project area, and is specifically intended to address the use of existing building 123 in building 123A as part of a private medical school, with the balance of the Phase 1 project area to be developed for related commercial uses subject to a redevelopment agreement. My first question is, what is the status of the redevelopment agreement? And is that the same document as the sales agreement between Roche and Prism? Or is that a document that outlines the agreement between the Township of Nutley and Prism, the developer?
Jenna Tempo?
Sure. The agreement between the developer and Roche is a separate agreement. We are now calling it the PSA, purchase-sale agreement.
What is PSA?
PSA.
PSA. And that's between Roche and Prism?
Between Roche and Prism. We are not a signatory to that, nor are we a signatory to the lease. What we will be a signatory to is the redevelopers agreement, which you just referenced. There'll be several other agreements, which we're going to be rolling out at the next meeting, including a pilot agreement or a financial agreement.
Pilot is a pilot in lieu of taxes?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes? Okay, thank you.
And we'll also do things called a contribution agreement, a special assessment agreement. There are some ancillary agreements that we are going to be entering with the developer and with the medical school that we're going to be contracting with.
Okay. So to outline it, there will be a redevelopment agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement.
It's called a financial agreement.
A financial agreement, a special assessment agreement?
Yeah, because of the unique nature of this transaction, not a typical pilot arrangement type of deal, building a building, we had to develop some additional type of documents to ensure that we would be getting the pilot that we're -- and continue to negotiate.
Okay. Pilot meaning the payment in lieu of taxes?
Taxes, right.
Okay.
And that number is still being finalized, although it's -- that's why we didn't put it on for tonight. It'll be on for next week.
Okay.
I mean, next meeting, excuse me.
And while we're on this, this goes to Commissioner Evans' tax bill announcement. Are we still anticipating the complete $5 million promised as from the state to offset taxes?
It's actually $5.5 million, and yes, we are.
Yes, we are. But we don't know for sure, and we will know approximately when.
I can't answer that, because of the negotiations with the Governor's Office regarding the Transformation -- Transportation Trust Fund.
Right. I'm following it.
Just gotta wait it out.
Understand. Okay, thank you. Okay. So that explains the redevelopment agreement. It says, "It is envisioned that a redevelopment parcel of a land consisting of portions larger -- consisting of portions of larger existing lots in Nutley will be created, and that the Phase 1 project area will be subdivided to create Block 80, lots 4.01 and 4.02 in Clifton, and Block 300, lots 101, 102, 103, 104, in the Township of Nutley."
That's been done already.
Okay, that has been done.
That was done by the Planning Board.
And what are the zoning specifics for that block and lots?
What happens is the redevelopment plan creates lots, which will be commensurate basically with the medical -- and ancillary buildings that they may build on that site related to it. There may also be a commercial-type building that they can build. So it's -- we haven't discussed those details. Right now, the pilot only consists of the building that exists, okay? And the ground under which the rest of the subdivision.
Okay. So the zoning right now for the blocks mentioned in Phase 1 is as is in the current master plan?
No, it's the redevelopment plan.
In the redevelopment plan? Do you not know what the current zoning is for that in the redevelopment plan?
I think it's a B-2 zone, I think.
The Hoffman-Larosh property is...
No, I'm just specifically referring to Block 300, lots...
All the same.
101, 3, and 4. What is the zoning for the block?
It's a mixed-use zone, so I think it's a B-2 zone.
B-2, yeah.
Mixed use?
Mixed use.
Which includes residential?
Not in that particular piece. Mixed use being it could be a medical center, it could be there an administration building, or some other building could go there, looking at commercial use.
Okay. Well, here's what it says for permitted uses in Phase 1 area are as follows. Offices, medical professional, healthcare services, pharmacies, physical therapy, and related services, restaurants, coffee shops, and bookstores, and structured parking. So is there going to be structured parking in Phase 1 on the Nutley side?
Right now, there is no plan for structured parking in Phase 1 on the Nutley side. The parking lot, the parking that was structured was moved to the Clifton side.
Okay.
Part of the negotiation.
Okay, thank you. It also says, "Uses not listed above are not permitted in the Phase 1 project area." And here's my concern. However, final determination as to whether a use is permitted, as included in the above, shall be made by the Board of Commissioners, acting as redevelopment entity, based on a concept plan reviewed during negotiation of a redevelopment agreement. Commissioners, during your negotiations of the redevelopment agreement, have there been any redevelopment agreement negotiations to date that included the Board of Commissioners?
Should I answer that, Mayor? All the Commissioners have been involved in reviewing and providing input into the redevelopers agreement, which will be rolled out next week. I mean, next meeting. I keep saying next week. I mean next meeting. So they absolutely have been involved, and it provides a lot of detail related to the project. And also, what you just read is an important part that the Commissioners negotiated, which is to have some final say on what happens there. So we don't give up complete control. We have the ability to have a say in what's going to be developed there, if it's not a permitted use that we've already provided in the redevelopment plan.
Okay. So what you're saying is in two weeks, the citizens of Nutley will be able to view the redevelopment agreement?
As long as it's a final draft, final document, yes. Right now, it's in draft form.
And will it be available on the nutleynewjersey.org website?
That's the decision of the Mayor and Commissioners, not...
Mayor, would you consider making that document available?
As long as it is ready.
Well, once it's ready, once it's a public document, would you consider making it available? Thank you so much. I have a question about building setbacks. Page 12. None are required from interior lot lines of proposed lots 101 through 104, except that all new buildings that may be built, constructed in Phase 1 project area, shall be set back at least 10 feet from an interior private road, and at least 20 feet from Kingsland Street, except if the buildings are higher than, I don't know, it's messed up here. If they're higher than 50 feet, then the setback shall be 50 feet. Are we intending to build buildings 50 feet from Kingsland Street?
No, that's not what that means. What that means is there are prior non-conforming uses as a result of the creation of the lots. So the lots are created, there's building 123 and 123A, which are within the setbacks of a normal setback provision. You understand what I'm talking?
Right. But they're way more than 50 feet from Kingsland.
Right. So that was mainly created to allow for that building to be in conformity with the statute or with the ordinance. What we're talking about is any future buildings, which may be contemplated, have not been discussed, and are not part of the plan now. We're trying to set some parameters for the setbacks. If there need an exception from that, they would have to go to the Planning Board and/or this Board for final approval. So we would have the ability to help determine what setbacks we would actually allow, but we provided some in the redevelopment plan for now.
And while we're on the Planning Board, I'd just like to make a request that this, to date this year, our Planning Board Chairman has missed over 50% of the Planning Board meetings. And I think it's extremely important for the citizens of Nutley that we have a Chairman of the Planning Board that is least able to make 50% of the meetings. And right now, he's missed over 50% of the meetings in 2016. So I'd like for the Board of Commissioners to consider even either having a secondary person. And also, Mayor, I've asked you this before, and you haven't made a decision, but I'm going to remake the request that you reenact the Citizens Advisory Committee as we move forward with the redevelopment plan as part of the Planning Board, particularly in light of the fact that our Chairman seems not to be able to make the meetings. So request.
Take that under advisement.
Okay, thank you. Roads, utilities, and solid waste removal, page 15. Does the resolution pass tonight allocating $187,000 in water improvements? Does that have anything to do with the Roche property?
No.
No? And what is that for?
Bonding for various improvements in the water system.
Various improvements in the water system, but it has nothing to do with the lawsuit that the town is involved in regarding Roche and leakage? Okay, thank you. Is there an update on that lawsuit?
Jenna Tempo?
Not sure what lawsuit you're referring to.
The environmental lawsuit.
Batista litigation?
Yes.
No update on that?
No update on the Batista litigation. Thank you, sir. The Township of Nutley will not be responsible for snow removal, solid waste removal, street cleaning, installation, sewer, stormwater, with any -- within any portion of Phase 1 that is not owned by the Township of Nutley, as other, except as may otherwise be set forth in one or more redevelopment agreements. The terminology "one or more" seems to infer that there may be more than one developer. At this time, is more than...
What that anticipates is a future redevelopment agreement. If another building is built, we would need a new redevelopment agreement to cover that building or any additions to the property. So there'll be one redevelopment agreement for the existing deal, and that will have that encompassed, those terms encompassed in it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Page 18, properties to be acquired. As the majority of Phase 1 redevelopment plan area is located in Nutley, and the ownership of Nutley designated the parcels of Phase 1 redevelopment plan as condemnation redevelopment area, the Township of Nutley identifies Nutley parcels in the Phase 1 redevelopment area as potentially necessary for acquisition via eminent domain in order to effectuate the redevelopment of the site. Does resolution... 128-16 issuance of redevelopment area bonds or RABs? Does that have anything to do with potentially necessary acquisition of property in Phase 1 redevelopment via eminent domain?
No.
No? And what are those...
Nothing to do with it.
What are those redevelopment bonds?
They're tied to the financial arrangement and the pilot agreement that we're going to be doing. And tonight, we're introducing a resolution relative to going out to be able to bond revenue or the RAB bonds, we call them RAB bonds. So we're going to have that tonight. That has to be done so that they can make an application to the State to approve this whole pilot arrangement.
So we have to get bonding in order for Prism to be able to...
But they're non-recourse bonds against us. We don't have to pay them back.
Non-recourse?
Non-recourse bonds against the Township.
And is there a dollar figure on these bonds?
It's going to be a million dollars.
$1 million in non-recourse bonds? Would you mind explaining how that works for the taxpayers?
We don't have enough time.
Well, just can you give me your best shot?
Honestly, maybe, it's hard to explain in this type of setting. We'd have to almost show you. But the bonds are a necessary part of the whole development, can be used for improvements on the property by the developer. improvements on the property by the developer. It's a complicated process, Penny, and I could try to explain it to you in more detail. We have more time, but it's a necessary part of this deal. We're not, we're not on the hook for them. That's the most important part. It allows the whole...
None of this will be part of the taxpayers' burden?
No, it's not the taxpayers' liability.
We bond out a million dollars. That million dollars allows the developer to use some of those for infrastructure improvements, whatever.
The developer's going to buy the bonds, not...
Okay, yeah, well, the developer is, the developer's doing the bonds.
School.
We're just signing off on it.
The developer for this part of the phase one is the school.
Okay.
Not the developer for the rest of the site. Make sure that, that's a big distinction.
Okay, all right. So when we move to phase two, is the point at which we will begin to negotiate with PRISM, possibly for some impact fees to deal with...
Landry, we're not talking about phase two now. We're only talking about phase one. That's the public hearings on phase one.
Okay, all right. The final thing is, I would hope that the Commissioners would at some point in the near future, plan some type of town hall meeting, and invite the residents of Nutley to type of question and answer forum, and maybe a PowerPoint presentation, and maybe a little explanation at one point during this whole redevelopment plan scenario over the past couple of years. It was discussed, actually, to bring in sometime of marketing, PR person, to help with this, with the Township people, as we have a lot of questions, and we're excited about it. We'd just like to have a little more information about it as it goes along.
The developer has indicated they plan on doing just that.
Okay, PRISM does plan on do that? And did they give you any indication when?
It's been hard to get to this point right now. It's been a lot of, over the last two weeks, there's been so much activity, and a lot of the agreements aren't finalized yet. So it really hasn't been on the radar in terms of getting a date down and figuring when. But I would anticipate, and I don't know what the Mayor, the Commissioners think, probably sometime towards the end of the year, when they put together their plan.
Great, thank you. Final thing, I know that Kingsland is one of the entrances into the medical school, and that is a county road. I'd like to ask a question about the, there's nothing mentioned about the traffic plan or traffic flow patterns, and if in phase one, if the gated part that leads into the medical school will remain gated, and if Essex County is involved at all in the traffic flow plan for the medical school phase one.
I think most of what you're asking will be determined in phase two, and I think some of those issues have not been addressed in the phase one plan or contemplated at this point.
Okay, so traffic has not been addressed in the phase one development plan for the medical school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for all your hard work. I'm really excited about this project, and looking forward to learning more. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number 3341? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Motion to move the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Just before I vote on that, I'd just like to put on the record, at those meetings, and I spoke to our council about this before I opened my mouth, but I am adamantly against any parking garages being put on the Nutley side. And I know to move the process forward tonight, we kind of had to move this to make everything else fall into place, but I just want to put on the record that I was told only a geological crisis would make those garages move on the Nutley side, and barring that, I would not expect them to come to this Board of Commissioners and bring that issue up to us.
Oh, yes.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, whereas New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless is a provider of commercial mobile service subject to regulation by the Federal Communications Commission, and whereas Verizon Wireless has entered into agreements with parties that have lawful right to maintain poles in the public right-of-way pursuant to which Verizon Wireless may jointly use such poles erected within the public right-of-way in the Township of Nutley, and whereas New Jersey law permits such joint use provided there is a consent of the relevant municipality, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that permission and authority are hereby granted to Verizon Wireless and the successors and assigns the jointly used poles erected by parties that have the lawful right to maintain poles within the public right-of-way in the Township of Nutley, subject to the following, and there are, one, two, three, four, there are eight conditions that follow this that are noted on this resolution. Resolution, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has entered into a contract with Cablevision Light Path Inc., 200 Jericho Quadrangle, Jericho, New York, for telephone and television services, and whereas the Director of Recreation in the Department of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, telephone and television services in the amount of $358.63. Money is available from account 5-01-510-237, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that change order number one for Cablevision Light Path in the amount of 358.63B is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the township has a need for internet and long-distance phone service, and whereas NJSA 48-2-5F permits the award of contract without bidding for the supply of any service, which is a public utility, subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU, and whereas the Director of Parks and Recreation has determined and certified in writing at the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for the year will exceed $17,500, and whereas the proposal from Cablevision Light Path had submitted a proposal in the amount of $2,092.5 per month, worth $35,010 yearly, and whereas Cablevision Light Path has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committing the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract, and whereas funds are available from account 6-01-510-237, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley authorizes the Mayor to enter into a three-year contract with Cablevision Light Path for the provision of internet and long-distance phone service. Be it further resolved that the business disclosure, entity certification, and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire support and maintenance of the Township Avea Communication Manager 6.0 IP phone system, and whereas NJSA 40A:11-5T permits the award of contract without bidding for the supply of any services, which is a public utility subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU, and whereas the proposal from strategic products and services in the amount of $17,354.04 per year will provide mandatory 24/7/365 emergency support and maintenance, and is recommended by the Township's IT administrator, and whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for three years, and whereas funds are available from account 6-01-510-237, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Mayor and Township Clerk be and are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with strategic products, services, for the Township's Avea Phone System Maintenance. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be there in a second. Whereas local capital budget for the year 2016 was adopted on May 17, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved capital budget, now therefore be resolved the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley that the following amendments to the approved capital budget section be made, primarily shifting between accounts and adding $75,000 related to various actions we have to take on trees regarding our tree canopy. Be further resolved, two certified copies of this resolution be filed forthwith in the Office of the Director of Local Government. No move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a professional services contract with environmental, impact environmental, 1,000-page avenue, Lynnhurst, New Jersey, to perform environmental investigation and testing at 307 Estreola 9 Franklin Avenue and at 529 Franklin Avenue. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for additional professional service in order to meet the preliminary assessment standards to secure innocent purchaser defenses in New Jersey pursuant to NJSA 58:1023, and whereas change order number one has been authorized for an increase in the amount of $7,500 to complete the environmental investigation and testing at 529 Franklin Avenue. Whereas funds are available from account 601-226-205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, that change order number one in the amount of $7,500 be hereby approved in order to establish innocent land pursuant to 42 U.S.C. 9607B. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor, excuse me, I have to be asked, I have to be excused. Okay, thank you.
Resolution 191-16. This resolution is lengthy. I'll read it by its title. I'll ask council to summarize all the whereases and therefores that are included in here. This resolution of the Township of Nutley making application to the local finance board, seeking authorization for not to exceed $1 million in redevelopment area bonds to finance the construction and installation of certain improvements within the Hafner Roche redevelopment area pursuant to NJSA 48:12A, 29A3, and NJSA 48:12A-67. Allen, would you summarize?
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. This is long, but a lot of it involves the history of the site, starting with March 18 of 2014, when the Board of Commissioners directed the Planning Board to conduct their preliminary study, investigation, with regard to determining that the area was in need of redevelopment, and instituting condemnation as part of that plan. It then takes us through February of 15, and all the way through into page three, where we talk about where we are today. Actually, we were in September of 15, with regard to the subdivision having been approved for the property, which constitutes the 10.9 acres on the Nutley side, developing four separate lots. The actual current name of the phase one project for the medical school temporarily is called PB Nutcliffe Med LLC. We can be assured that will not be the name of the medical school, but that is in here. And this, this resolution authorizes the Board to, through the redevelopment bond law, to go ahead and apply for the $1 million in RAB bonds, which will be submitted to the state in an application for the local finance board. That's the basis for the entirety of this document. It is a very important document with regard to the project, as I stated earlier, and allows the project to help be financed, and this bond can be used for construction on the project. I think that summarizes it.
Thank you. Based on council's summary, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and the Township Council of the Township of Nutley as follows. One, the aforementioned recitals are incorporated herein, as though fully set forth at length. Two, the application to the local finance board is hereby approved, and the Township's Bond Council, Permane and Miranda LLC, as subcontractor to Inglesina Webster and Wiskala and Taylor, along with other representatives of the Township, are hereby authorized to prepare and submit the above referenced application. The local finance board is hereby respectfully requested to consider such application and to record its findings and recommendations and/or approvals as the same may be required by law. And three, if any part of this resolution shall be deemed invalid, such parts shall be severed, and the invalidity thereby shall not affect the remaining parts of the resolution. A copy of this resolution shall be available for the public inspection at the Township Municipal Clerk's Office. This resolution takes effect upon final...
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Finally, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $438.22 for block 5503, lot two. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Whereas a person-to-person plenary retail consumption license number 071633017009 for FNS Maintenance LLC was approved by the Board of Commissioners on July 5, 2016 via resolution number 180-16. And whereas said resolution number 180-16 is correct in all respects, except for the effective date of the transfer, now therefore be resolved, the Nutley Board of Commissioners does hereby direct the municipal clerk to endorse the license certificate to the new ownership as follows. This license, subject to all its terms and conditions, is hereby transferred to FNS Maintenance LLC effective June 30, 2016. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation has provided tax clearance certificates for each establishment listed below for this renewal period. Whereas these establishments have been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, and the Police Department of the Township of Nutley are in satisfactory condition. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the renewal of the person-to-person pocket liquor license be granted to the following licensee effective July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Be it further resolved that the municipal clerk be and is hereby directed and authorized to issue said pocket license for licensing period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. Liquor license number 071633017009 to FNS Maintenance LLC as a pocket license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sale bids for the 2016 purchase of curbside recycling bins for the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and Commission Chambers, Township Paul 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, August 10, 2016, at 3:00 p.m. prevailing time, at which time they'll be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Mr. Roberts is here. I'd like to recognize him and thank him for all his hard work on the redevelopment plan. Thank you, sir.
I was here earlier and then went to Clifton. They adopted the same plan earlier this evening, and then I came back in case I could get to the rest of the public hearing. So I can let the Board of Commissioners know that it was adopted in both towns this evening.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, read the notice.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Boards shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside. I missed a couple of meetings because I was out of town, but I want to make another request. I think I'm at number six, that the Board consider having the meetings of the economic... the Economic Development Advisory Committee open to the public and business members of the community, and that the minutes be made available to the citizens and taxpayers of Nutley, or that that Economic Development Advisory Committee remain a closed group, but the Mayor enact another Citizens Advisory Committee specifically directed towards economic development within our downtown and townwide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none?
Move adjourned.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the time is now 9:03.
Aight, everybody.